Good evening. Welcome, everybody, to the April, May. It's May.[26.23][26.23](Laughter). Wow, the year's moving. The May 17th, regular meeting of your Board of Commissioners. And I appreciate everyone attending tonight. Recently, we've had some renovations done here to the space. And one of the things we're not really advertising is if you're here, if you are hard of hearing, we do have some listening devices that are available for you at the clerk's desk. So if you need a listening device, he can assist you with that. And this is the first time we've talked about it, so I hope that works. We're trying it out on a few people tonight, and we'll see how that goes. So anyway, again, we appreciate everyone being here. Tonight, we'll have invocation led by Father Frank Sebo, the Holy Infant Catholic Church in Reedsville, followed by our Pledge of Allegiance. And I'll ask Doug Isley, he's on our school board, if he'll administer that pledge immediately following. So we'll ask everyone to stand if able and remain standing for the pledge.
In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen. Loving heavenly Father, we come to you this hour asking your blessing and to send your Holy Spirit upon us as we gather together. We pray for guidance in the matters at hand and ask that you assist us in conducting our work with a spirit of joy and enthusiasm. Give us the desire to find ways to serve your people. Help us to work together and encourage each other to excellence. Allow us always to remain mindful of the needs of our brothers and sisters in our communities, the ostracized, and the poor. We ask this in the name of the Lord Jesus, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Well, as everyone knows, we work from a published agenda that has been out for about a week. And I'd like to ask the Commissioners if they look over that, if there are any changes. If there are not, we'll accept a motion to approve. Are there any changes?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I have two amendments, one under the consent agenda, item six, to remove Ms. Portia Paris as an appointment to the Board of Health and Human Services. This because we've not received her personal concurrence yet. And also to add on a new business to approve additional state allocation for low-income energy assistance money. These payments in the sum of $100,000. And the funds are to be used to assist with utility payments of customers who received LEAP earlier this year. And with these adjustments to the agenda, I move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Berger. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We have an approved agenda. Next, we have a resolution honoring Bonnie Joyner. And I've asked Commissioner Berger if he would. If you'll come up, Ms. Joyner, we'll all come down into the front here, and we recognize you.
Well, some time ago, Ms. Bonnie Joyner brought to the county the idea of the Charters of Freedom being displayed somewhere on government property. It's a wonderful idea. I really don't know where the idea originated as far as where you first saw the idea. But ultimately, their desire is to place a copy of Declaration of Independence, the Constitution, and the Bill of Rights in every county in the state of North Carolina, and I believe as many counties in the country as they can, all without a single penny of taxpayer money. And Bonnie worked relentlessly trying to get that here in Rockingham County. And through her hard work and dedication, we now have a display over at the Rockingham County Courthouse. And it is, from what I understand, cemented and vaulted in, apparently with a many-hundred-year guarantee. Of course, this display allows for school groups and our citizens to have a local place to see the foundations of our country. And we certainly appreciate all the hard work that you're putting in and organizing these efforts and bringing this display to Rockingham County. I would ask if our manager would mind?
Sure.
Have a copy?
Yes, sir.
If you wouldn't mind reading the resolution, please.
Sure. Resolution honoring Bonnie Joyce Joyner. Whereas Bonnie Joyce Joyner, a native of Rockingham County, has dedicated her life to the tireless and unselfish pursuit of teaching and working to improve both her local economy in Rockingham County. Whereas Bonnie Joyce Joyner began her teaching career as a junior high school mathematics teacher, later teaching different grade levels and subjects, including elementary school, high school, and special needs students throughout all grades, with her greatest joy in her career that spanned 49 years, coming from working with high school students with special needs. And whereas in 2019, Bonnie Joyce Joyner observed a Charters of Freedom site under construction in Lenora, North Carolina, which included full-scale replicas of the Declaration of Independence, the U.S. Constitution, and the Bill of Rights. And was excited to learn that these sites were being constructed in North Carolina and across the country through a North Carolina-based company, Freedom Forward, Inc., Incorporated. Whereas Bonnie Joyce Joyner subsequently formed a steering committee and worked with the Rockingham County Board of Commissioners, the county manager, the Mark, members of the community, and Freedom Forward, Incorporated, to bring a Charters of Freedom site to Rockingham County, with work being paused due to the pandemic of November 2020 when construction began. And whereas, over the course of several years, the vision of Bonnie Joyce Joyner and others that joined with her to bring about this educational resource came to fruition with the dedication ceremony on March 26, 2021, of the 33rd Charters of Freedom site in the nation at the Rockingham County Judicial Center in Wentworth. And whereas Bonnie Joyce Joyner is a genuine public servant who has contributed to her community in order to establish an enduring legacy for generations to come, teaching children the history and value of people who fought for our freedom and democracy. Now therefore be resolved that the Rockingham County Board of Commissioners hereby expresses its appreciation to Bonnie Joyce Joyner for her passion for education and her working establishing a Charters of Freedom site for the citizens of Rockingham County this 17th day of May 2021.
Thank you, Lance. On behalf of the Commissioners, we'd like to present you with a framed copy of that resolution, and thank you for all of your hard work.[513.62][513.62](Applause). And I believe we've got something else for you.
Yeah, Bonnie, on behalf of the Commissioners and Lance's lapel, I'd like to present you with this lapel pin that you can take and wear proudly at the technical place in Rockingham County everywhere you go. Okay, thank you very much.[544.66][544.66](Applause). Also, one more thing we need to share with you. The Commissioners, at their own expense, has placed a brick in your honor at the location in front of the courthouse. So the Charters of Freedom now has a Bonnie Joyner brick too, on behalf of the Rockingham County Commissioners. So thank you.
Thank you. I am humbled and appreciative of this recommendation. I did find this project two years ago, and I spearheaded it for a couple of years. Through 2020, with a lot of obstacles, we overcame that and persevered and determined to make it happen. But then I did it alone. There were a lot of people who came on board during the process and during the dedication to make it happen. And I'm pleased to say that it became a community project that we can all take pride in. My hope is that we will take that site and the education component of that foundation and teach our young people foundations of our government and rights and freedoms that we have, that they are going to maintain that and preserve it, and that they learn to honor and respect those who protect and serve us and do that. If we do that, I think it will involve the work that they're doing. Thank you.
(Applause). Thank you. Come on, come on, come on. Come on here. Thank you for being here. Thank you. Thank you for being here. Thank you. Thank you for being here. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for being here. Thank you. Thank you for sharing. Thank you very much.
Archie Bill, imitation, tighten up.
Oh, me. While we're getting settled, I'll encourage those of you who have not been to see those documents, you really need to do that. It is a very impressive site. Well, with that, the next item is our consent agenda. We operate with a consent agenda. Items on this are non-controversial. Normally, they're just run-of-the-mill business. And if anyone has any questions, you can please contact Lance Metzler, our county manager, and he'll be glad to fill you in with the details of those items. With that being said, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. That takes us to public comment. And once again, we have no one signed up for public comment tonight. Our next item on the agenda is a public hearing. Carrie Spencer?
Good evening. Let's see the screen. Is this coming up?
Yes.
Okay, good. We have two public hearings. One is for a subdivision off of Carlton Road. It's located in the southwest corner of the county in our economic development land class. This class of land use is intended to accommodate and encourage new industrial and commercial uses in areas where local government supports substantial investments in water, sewer, and transportation systems. And this is the case for this residential neighborhood will take advantage of water and sewer infrastructure. Property is located here, just west of Highway 220. And an aerial photograph, which I think you can probably see a lot better than I can, the applicant has submitted a very preliminary sketch, subdivision sketch, which I think you've seen, to just begin an initial design. But at this time, there is no set definite number of lots or design. It's basically going to be over 100 lots, but the design is still to be done. At this point, you're just looking at the zoning. The only comments that I've heard, and I did hear quite a few, were two different issues. One about traffic on Carlton Road, which I'm not, it's quite a windy road, so I'm not sure if there are cars that are using that as a cut-through. Honestly, a neighborhood will help to defray some of that with putting additional cars on the road. The other concern is the access to and from Highway 220. So I have made, I know this is out of your purview, but I have taken it upon myself to make sure that the DOT knows about this project and others, and encourage them to move along with the highway improvements that would eventually improve that intersection. Do you have questions for me?
Gentlemen, any questions for Ms. Spencer? With that being said, we will be glad to open the public hearing at this time. And we do have two folks who have signed up to speak. Al Leonard is first. Mr. Leonard? Just please state your name and address when you make it to the podium.
I'm Al Leonard, PO Box 9846 Greensboro, North Carolina. I work with the Carroll Companies. As you know, we're doing the On Text project down the street. Just a side note, I know everyone should have been getting an invite Wednesday to come to the, we're standing the walls up on that project started today. So look forward to seeing you there. This project here, I've got some handouts. If I could give you.
Thank you. The first handout I've handed up says Levington on the front. That's the name of the proposed community that we're working on. The first tab is just a color rendering that represents what we're planning at this time. Our plans are, these would be ribbon streets. We would clear far enough back just for the homes. Our goals are to save as much trees and so forth as possible. This plan has 21 acres out of the 102 that are set aside to be outside of the lot area. So we'd end up saving somewhere around 20%, 22% of the site, undisturbed, in addition to the trees and so forth that would remain on the lots. The second tab is just a summary of what TRC noted in their meeting back in January. And then the third tab is a letter that we sent out to the same addresses that the county had sent notices out. We heard from one surrounding owner, the Kelo Foods owner, who is the immediate owner right behind the triangle piece on this property. He didn't have any issues as far as I could see, or when I spoke to him, he just wanted to know a little bit more about the water and the sewer that would serve the site. We've got a development arm in the Carroll Companies for single-family detached homes, both to build the homes and to develop the homes. This community is going to be somewhere in 1,500 up to 2,700, 2,800 square foot range. They'll probably start somewhere in the 200,000 and go up to 350,000 or so, built on crawl spaces. We'll have county water and sewer that we've been working with the county staff on. So again, the other handout that I gave you, we reached out to our traffic consultant, Davenport. They studied the site, excuse me, studied the site, studied the intersection, studied Carlton Road, looked at the projected plans for DOT out on 220, and gave their opinion there on the second page and so forth in that handout as well. So they felt like it, the existing surrounding streets in 220 would handle the proposed development. So I've got Sarah Clark here. She's our real estate agent who's been working with the landowners. And we'd be glad to answer any kind of questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard. Do we have any questions for Mr. Leonard at this time? Well, thank you. Next, we have Mike Cusato.
I'm Mike Cusato. I'm with Kelo Foods, and it's the property directly adjacent to the project at 119 Carlton Park Drive. What I wanted to do, and it was touched on just briefly, is to also bring it to attention. As this project moves forward, what will be an issue is going to be some of the truck traffic. There is a major truck stop on Carlton Park Drive. Carlton Park Drive is about 300 yards long and ends at what has become a very popular and busy truck stop. On the weekends or some nights, you may find 30, 40 tractor trailers there, and they are in and out constantly through the night and heavy in the morning and heavy in the evening. They've done considerable damage to the road at the intersection of Carlton Park Drive and Carlton Road. So DOT or somebody needs to, you know, really kind of take a look at the road structure and whether or not there's going to be, you know, some upgrading of the substrates of the road so it doesn't constantly collapse the way it's been doing, and possibly some widening, particularly where the truck traffic is going to be merging in with the traffic coming out of the subdivision. The other issue is just simply getting across 220 during rush hour and during, you know, other heavy parts of the week. Like if there's something going on at the Speedway in Martinsville, it can take 10 to 20 minutes right now just to get across 220. And when you get behind the tractor trailers, it's longer than that. So a little bit further down the road towards 73, there's been some changes, some U-turn patterns and things like that have been put in. I don't see the people in the new subdivision going out the back way and trying to cut over to 65 to get out to 73, because it's just going to be more convenient to jump right out there on 220. So I think, you know, the traffic issue is going to be more of a road structure issue than anything else. 100 homes, there's not going to be that much traffic, you know, but it will be enough that it's going to cause congestion the way things are structured right now. And that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate it. Gentlemen, any questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I have a question for Ms. Spencer. I noticed that Jason Julian? I noticed that Jason Julian attended the review in the planning board. Did he have any comments about what Mike just brought up concerning the traffic?
Not about traffic per se, other than to say that he would definitely, you know, take that information back to the planning and design folks. His main role is to give them a driveway permit onto Carlton Road itself and determine whether or not that road requires any widening or turning lane for the entrance and exit. But I did bring the traffic to his attention and also spoke to sheriff's deputy about that area. And there aren't accidents on Carlton Road itself, but there have been a couple in that 220 area. So again, I mean, and I advise you as your planner that, one, they are very different issues. Of course, this is about suitability for zoning. Its impact on a nearby intersection is something to certainly be concerned about, but wouldn't necessarily be a relevant reason to approve or disapprove of zoning.
Mr. Chair, I might mention to you, I don't have any of the details, but I'm aware of some other folks within DOT. And when I, that do, that are aware of this situation, and when I spoke to them, I said, "Well, it's going to be part and parcel of limited access for I-73 in there." But I don't have the details, but I am aware that DOT is looking at it.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner.
Yeah, as part of, as our representative to the transportation planning organization, the issue is front and center.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Spencer. With that, we have no one else signed up to?
No, I'm good. I'm good.
You all right? With that, we'll close the public hearing at this point. And now, if there's any further discussion or questions?
I just got one question. Lance, is there any way you can reach out to DOT about the road damage from the transfer trucks at their business before they're, to have them look at it?
Sure.
And maybe you can bring up the intersection right there at 222, so thank you.
Very good. Thank you. And I guess with that, we need to entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second?
I'll make a motion to approve Case 2021-09.
With a statement?
With analysis and a statement.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Second.
Very good. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you very much. And that takes us to our next item, which is Carrie Spencer again.
Somebody turned us off here.
I think they changed us.
Andrew, I might need help making, getting this to display.
Are you doing that, Mr. Manager?
I was going to say, just make sure that you guys open this up as a public hearing.
And we'll do that right after she presents.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. That's not the way it's worded on our agenda, but that is the way it was published, I think.
Y'all are funny tonight. Y'all are funny.
I am pleased to be bringing this to you tonight. We've had kind of a journey with this project. I believe we ended up, we have the?
Excuse me, Carrie. Paul, can you hear Carrie okay?
Okay. Is this better?
Is that better, Paul?
Moving around too much. A few members of the advisory group are here. I know Charles Rakestraw is here. Matt, who's ever here, raise your hand. They've worked really hard on this project, along with Charlie and Kevin, to get this to a point where it's ready to present to you. And our consultant, Eric Woolrich, who's also here, audio on the phone from Destination by Design, have all worked very hard together to make this happen. I know you've seen the document. You have a paper copy of the document. Are there overriding questions that you have about it? How much detail would you like me to go into tonight?
Well, I know you've presented this to us on prior occasions.
I did.
And we've had a few changes that have been made since then. You've published this to the Commissioners, and it's been available to the public now.
Yes.
So with that, I don't know that we have any questions now. Let's open a public hearing. I'll see if anyone wants to speak with regards to this, and then we'll see if there are any questions following that. So with that said, we will now open a public hearing regarding the Rockingham Vision Plan, our comprehensive land use plan. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak regarding this item? That being said, nothing heard on that, we will close the public hearing portion, and we'll ask the Commissioners, do the Commissioners have any questions? Commissioner? Commissioner Travis?
I just got a comment. Carrie, I just want to tell you and your advisory board, thanks for an excellent job. I know it was probably painstaking, but I sit at home reading it, and it's very, very well thought out, and I appreciate all the hard work on it, and I look forward to getting this passed.
And to Eric and his team for the creative work to Destination by Design.
Very good. Very good job.
Commissioner Pirtle?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I echo what Commissioner Travis said. I appreciate all the work that the advisory team did, and you and your staff, the county staff. And I appreciate you taking the comments that were made last time and configuring them so that the verbiage fit the idea that we all want for Rockingham County. So I just want to let you know how much I appreciate all the work that went into that.
Yeah, I'll echo Commissioner Pirtle's response. Thank you, those who are here tonight. Thank you, Paul Sendowitz, our planning board, and Jim Fink is on our planning board. I saw him earlier. Charles Rakestraw, and I see Matt Smith in the back. And I know you guys were on the committee. There may be others. But I certainly do appreciate y'all tolerating myself and Kevin giving you a hard time.
We haven't gone to UDO yet.
Well, that's true. We're not done with that yet.
It does begun.
So but we appreciate you being accommodating. Thank you, Eric, for your trouble as well.
You actually bring up a good point, Carrie. Big picture wise, this is actually a two-part process.
Right.
So this is kind of just the beginning before we really get into the, I guess, the real rules that we'll be playing by.
Regulation that implements the plan is basically how that works. That's correct, and that will come within the next couple of months. I'll continue to work on that project with Eric and with staff.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, gentlemen, Commissioner Richardson?
I've been pretty amazed as we've gone through this process, and I appreciate the commissioners that worked on this process. And those of you that haven't seen this land use plan, it's not a two-page document. It's rather lengthy. And there's so much stuff in there that I'm sure that there will be members of the public that find something objectionable. But there will be an opportunity to address those things, and I think it is a remarkably good starting point. And Eric and the rest of the team have done a marvelous job, and we certainly appreciate all of you guys going there. And thank you, Carrie, for staying with us long enough to see this to fruition.
The plan that you saw tonight from Carol Ann, by the way, making use of smaller lots and leaving open space behind is exactly the sort of thing that this plan is looking for. So I feel really, really good about that, very hopeful about future subdivisions, setting aside as much open space as possible and preserving open lands while building homes.
Well, it's my hope that folks will look for those very positive aspects in the plan, rather than trying to focus on some sort of small item that affects a very small number of folks. Cloistered housing, by the way, is one of my favorite things, environmentally sound and healthy for the economy of this county.
With that, gentlemen, do we have a motion to approve?
Yes, sir, you do. I move to approve.
Very good. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. Commissioner Burger?
Well, Carrie, unfortunately, we've been given some news that this may be your last official meeting as our planning director.
Yes, sir.
And I certainly want to thank you for all the hard work and the time that you've spent in this role for the citizens of our county. You know, there are two types of planners. There are those that look for ways to turn things down so that they do less work, and then there are those that find solutions. And without a doubt, you have worked to find solutions, and we certainly appreciate your hard work. You have spearheaded us into a major growth cycle, have attracted new developers, just a lot of folks that were not previously looking at Rockingham County. Since the announcement came out that you were leaving, I've talked to no fewer than eight developers that had nothing but praises for you. And I certainly wish you well where you're going, and you certainly will be missed.
I appreciate that. I really do. Now, they can come on up to Franklin County?
Well...
Kill the mic. Kill the mic. Thank you, Ms. Spencer. We do appreciate you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
...a lot.
With that, that takes us to our next item, to the county manager, Lance Metzler.
Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners, I'm pleased to bring to you tonight my recommended budget. In light of coping with the COVID-19 pandemic and working on logistics for providing vaccine clinics, I think that our budget team did an excellent job doing this this year. I would like to thank Paul Murray, Pat Galloway, Justin Thacker, especially Paul with his tenacity in keeping the budget straight and working with the department heads, and just in general, his ability to work on the budget with department heads. I really do appreciate that and all you do. In this slide, you'll see your vision, your mission statement, and strategic focus areas that you all approved earlier in the year, and this is what we based our budget development from. Our guiding principles were no property tax rate increase, maintain essential services delivery, and consider current and long-term capital needs. After we received all the requests, we had a general fund budget deficit of $15.7 million, or equivalent to a $0.20 of property tax rate. Again, this budget does not present a property tax increase. This is the 12th consecutive year with no property tax increase. The total general fund budget is a little over $99 million, which represents a 6.8% increase from the current year's adopted. All funds which include the general funds, enterprise funds, and other funds total almost $147 million. And just to let you know, the value of the penny has increased $22,700. Our current year add-on is $53.9 million, or an increase of over $1.5 million. The add-on is the largest source of discretionary revenue and are comprised of four parts. Real property is projected to increase by 1.2%, of an increase of approximately $430,000. Personal property is projected to increase by 0.9%, or an increase of $50,000. Public utilities is projected to increase by 6.9%, or an increase of $408,315. And motor vehicles is projected to increase by 10.6%, or increase of $567,574. Our tax rate went from 98.1% to 98.4%. Our forecast for sales tax projects a 24.4% increase, or almost $2.3 million. We had a significant increase in online purchases, and the fact that we budgeted very conservative in the current budget year due to COVID reflects this increase. This amount does not include the quarter cent sales tax. The projected revenue for the quarter cent sales tax is $2.256 million, which is transferred to the community college. We anticipate a decrease in EMS fees of $382,000 as we are rebounding from COVID. I think we will see an increase in collections in the upcoming year, but we still want to remain conservative. The budget reflects an increase in building inspections and zoning fees of $105,000. The number of single-family permits has increased 78% over the last two years. This past year marks the final payment from the Kate B. Reynolds grant for the integrative health program. This program is fully covered this year by the balance that we had from the grant, but this will not be the same result for next year. Due to changes at the state level, we see a decrease of $760,000, which is primarily the loss of revenues from 4E foster care funds. We are currently working with Cardinal to limit the impact of the loss of these revenues. We have budgeted an increase of fund balance appropriated this year from last year. This appropriation is for the fund balance plug that we use every year, expected unearned Duke Energy incentive dollars, funding from the public health escrow funds, funding from Kate B. Reynolds grants for the integrative health program, restricted sheriff's office funds, and $500,000 in CARES Act funds to reimburse the health insurance fund for COVID claims. The largest increase is reimbursing the health insurance fund. Now moving to revenues from expenditures from revenues, we had a request for 17.3 additional positions, but only recommending 6.3 full-time positions while making one part-time position a full-time position. We are also recommending to eliminate 6.991 positions. I'm recommending four additional detention officers to balance the shifts by adding one officer on each night shift and two officers that work the transition period, an environmental health specialist due to the dramatic increase that we were talking about earlier in development, specifically with septic and well permits, a community social service technician, which the county will be reimbursed at least 50% for this position, and a paralegal going from part-time to full-time and legal. The proposed budget also includes a 3% merit raise for eligible employees. We will discuss more at our work session, but it's a tiered approach to encourage high performance, and the impact is around $450,000. I've also included $400,000 to continue the one-third study that we started this past year. We'll have a recommendation from the Piedmont Triad Regional Council to you in June for the first round they studied, which are most vulnerable positions. Health insurance is a major concern due to the increase in cost claimants. Based on actual experience in the current year, we're anticipating a 34% increase of $3.2 million in health insurance. We're taking steps to address lowering the impacts, such as increasing the charge to departments and pre-65 retirees, by 20%, increasing the cost of additional coverages for employees and pre-65 retirees, and again, appropriate $500,000 in the CARES Act funding to reimburse the health insurance fund for COVID claims, and apply $1 million in the health insurance fund to balance it. We're anticipating that this year was an anomaly year, but if it continues, we're going to have to make some drastic plan designs and/or contribution changes. We have had discussions on some significant capital needs, and I've provided you all with a five-year capital improvement plan for consideration. The recommended budget includes $2.5 million in projects from the new CIP. The projects included are replacing the DSS and governmental center roofs, a generator for the animal shelter, paving the parking lot for the governmental center, replacing the HVAC system at the Mark, installing MDTs in our EMS fleets, replacing the voice-over-IP phone system, installing a self-service checkout system at the library, and improvements to the sheriff's evidence building. I'm recommending the replacement of the fallen vehicles, two high-mileage ambulances, one remount and one new 4x4, seven frontline patrol vehicles and one detective's vehicle, two social services vehicles that have high mileage will get reimbursed 50% on these, and replace a public health vehicle. The TARS that we have needs to be replaced as major transmission issues, and the funding will come from their escrow account. Moving to the landfill, recommend to replace an existing water truck that's worn out, create a new landfill capital reserve fund to save for large known capital needs, recommend putting $200,000 in reserve to replace a bulldozer in 2024, and $650,000 in reserve for construction of Cell 5, which may be as soon as 2024 as well. We received the public schools budget, and they are requesting no increase in its current expense allocation and almost a $7.5 million increase in their capital outlay request. The recommended budget that I have maintains the current year appropriation for both the current expense and capital outlay. The schools will have over $4 million in their capital reserve fund balance at the end of the year if they do not spend any this year. RCC requests an 8.6% increase in current expense and a 33% increase in capital outlay. The recommended budget maintains the current year appropriation for both the current expense and fully funds their capital outlay request minus the debt payment. The value of the quarter cent sales tax, again, is $2.256 million, which is an increased value of $356,000 from last year. These funds, again, are transferred to the community college. In conclusion, the department heads and staff were very effective in meeting deadlines and sharing information, especially in light of the efforts put forth in developing logistics to accommodate this mass vaccination process and through the COVID process. We used all the tools that we had in order to provide a sound budget that preserves funding for county services while recognizing impacts from this pandemic. This budget ensures that the county will continue to provide citizens with the quality of services they need, expect, and deserve. The next step, the Board of Commissioners staff and staff will have a budget work session on May 24th, starting at 8:00 a.m. here in the Commissioners' room, and the public hearing will be held on June 7th. Again, thank you for allowing me to present my recommended budget. Look forward to our work session.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Gentlemen, do we have any questions? I know tonight's just basically a presentation. With that, thank you, Mr. Manager. We look forward to seeing you on Monday as we discuss that at 8:00 a.m., right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Bob, can you give the commissioners a copy of that presentation?
This one?
Yeah, the one we just are looking at tonight.
Sure.
Just email to us.
Sure.
Thank you. With that, our next item is new business. Mr. Manager, any new business?
Yes, we have one item to consider. It came to us at the last minute from the state. It's a low-income energy assistance program. We're requesting, receiving $100,000 from the state for the LEAP program, or Low-Income Energy Assistance Program. We're asking you all to consider approving. It's 100% state funding or federal funding.
So we need a motion to approve that?
Yes, sir.
Gentlemen, you've heard it. Any questions?
Summer, Mr. Chairman.
Excuse me. All righty. Commissioner Travis has made a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Very, very good. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Very good. All opposed. All right, is that it, Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir.
With that, we move on to Commissioner Comments. Commissioner Travis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to thank everybody for coming out tonight, especially thanks to Bonnie Joyner for her dedication to improve Rockingham County. I appreciate it. I also want to say thanks to the county staff for the budget. I know they worked hard on it, and that's a big feat in today's society, 12 years without a tax increase in this county. So everybody in the county should be very pleased with that. So hopefully, this board will continue that process and not raise your taxes. With that, I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Travis. Commissioner Richardson?
Yeah, I too would like to thank many citizens out here. Bonnie, that was a remarkable accomplishment, and I look forward to a lot of bricks being sold to pay it off, but in the meantime, it's going to be a great boon to this county. I noticed Janice Wilkerson here, and Janice is another example of volunteerism within our county. She's taken on the position of heading our planning for our senior citizens. So Janice, using you as an example, but thanking all the volunteers that are out there, including those folks that worked on the land use plan. I was involved in that early, and Commissioner Berger, I think, carried the lion's share of that from the commissioner's side, and we certainly appreciate all of that because there were massive pieces of work to accomplish. Let me remind you, if you haven't gotten your vaccination and would like to stop wearing your mask for certain events, please go out. We're still giving those... We're giving them in the Health Department. Is that right, Mr. Manager, now?
Yes, sir.
So if you or anybody else, you know, and they don't have to be from Rockingham County, somebody needing these vaccinations, please post yourself over to the Health Department here at the county. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Commissioner Richardson. Commissioner Pirtle?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Echo again, congratulations, Bonnie. Thank you for all your hard work representing the community in that endeavor. I'd also like to congratulate the Reedsville High School football team. I think they won a state championship here over the past weekend, and that's a great thing for Rockingham County and a great thing for the folks over in Reedsville. I know that group really worked hard, and the legacy continues. And while I'm talking about schools, I had the opportunity to ride down the road the other day, passed one of the elementary schools over in Eden, and they were doing the graduation walk. And there was, at the elementary school, there was kids lined up on both sides of the little bus drive-through and with their teachers. the little bus drive-through and with their teachers, and the high school kids had their capping gowns on and did the walk by and was giving high fives to the elementary kids. And then as they were preparing to load back on the bus, they stopped by the sign there at the elementary school, and those that had went to that elementary school took their picture. And I thought, what a great way to, one, incentivize those young kids who's sitting there in elementary school to see, you know, what tomorrow can bring if you continue to work hard and keep your eye on the, on the prize, so to speak. And secondly, how rewarding was it, cool, how cool was it to see those high school kids engage in those young, young kids? So it's what's right with our schools in Rockingham County and with our kids. Now, if we can keep all those graduates here and rock, get them to come back to Rockingham County to live, work, and play, we'll have accomplished something. So with that said, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Pirtle. Commissioner Berger?
Just want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. This is perhaps the largest audience we've had in over a year.
Yes, you're right.
So we certainly appreciate you coming out and those at home that are tuning in. And I know that a lot of the, the crowd tonight was, was here for Ms. Bonnie, and we certainly appreciate your hard work. I mean, we can't say enough as far as enough thank yous for, for everything you put in to bring in that project to Rockingham County. Special recognition, Tony Reese and Bonnie Purgison from our Board of Elections, and then our planning board, I believe Paul Sinowitz is here from the planning board. Mr. Jim Fink is also here from the planning board. I saw earlier Sheriff Sam Page. He may be outside, I'm not sure, but he was here earlier. And I also saw the photographer Doug Isley here earlier. So certainly, and he's with our school board, so certainly appreciate y'all being here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Berger. And just, I've just got a couple of things, as we said earlier. Thank you, Carrie, for your service. We appreciate that. You will be missed. Also, at our last meeting, we talked about developing our litter prevention program, our litter cleanup program for interested groups who would want to take a mile or two of highway to clean up, and we're coordinating that, and that will be ready to present, I guess, a little more formally. But if you have a, a group that's interested, please reach out to the county, and we'll see if we can't get you on a schedule to help pick up litter and help improve the looks of our county. We've got a beautiful community, and let's make it even better. So with that said, thank you, everyone, again, for attending tonight. With that, we will be in, in recess until 8:00 a.m. Monday, May 24th, for a budget work session. Gentlemen, do I have a motion that we recess?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we are recessed until Monday morning, 8:00 a.m.
See you Monday.